Well, good afternoon, everyone. It is Thursday, May the seventh, two thousand and twenty. And welcome to this, the second electronic Zoom council meeting. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two thirty-eight, three point three of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended, and section sixteen point six point two four of the City of Woodstock procedural bylaw. The meeting will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and televised on Rogers TV. A recording of the meeting will also be posted on the City of Woodstock website following the meeting. If there's any interruptions or technical difficulties during the meeting, we'll take a recess while we iron those out. And we'll start off. Any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none? Any disclosure of new business? Matters arising from the minutes? Then the minutes of our last regular meeting held April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Counselor Accioni?
Thank you, your worship. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Lauder, that the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on April sixteenth, twenty twenty be adopted.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor? Carries unanimous. Our next item on the agenda is consideration of correspondence. And our first piece of correspondence is from Oxford County regarding county council composition and the election of head of council. Counselor Tate?
I'll make the motion option for request county staff to repair further report outlining more options. And further, that a review of the legislation outlined in the county staff report is noted that a permitted change to the composition of county council would also include having one member represent more than one lower tier municipality and are changing the number of votes given to any member as long as each member has at least one vote. If these are options, we would suggest that the staff would prepare a report, and that's why I'm making that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second or? Counselor Fraser, discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next item is the request for correspondence to be added from the township of Mapleton. Counselor Lauder?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports resolution twenty twenty zero four dash fourteen received from the Township of Mapleton from its March tenth, twenty twenty council meeting requesting that the province of Ontario undertake a review of the farm property tax class rate program. And further, that this resolution be forwarded to the Township of Mapleton and the Honorable Ernie Hardiman, Minister of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs at Oxford.
Thank you. And the seconder? Counselor Schattenberg, discussion? Counselor Lauder?
The reason I'm putting this forward is it was sent to all the councillors. And this program was put in place by the provincial government in nineteen ninety-eight. And the province has been reducing support from the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund while the cost of the farm tax rebate program is continually rising. And I would like to ask Mrs. Hildery to come on, comment on this.
Thank you.
Your worship through to Counselor Lauder, as she's already said, we're asking the province to review the farm tax program. And because it's starting to impact our other tax classes as well. It used to be that we would get, farmers would pay the residential rate, and then they could apply for a grant from the province and get seventy-five percent of that back. In nineteen ninety-eight, that changed. Farm tax went, tax ratio went to twenty-five percent. And the province was offsetting the revenue loss to the municipalities in grants. However, the grants continue to decline and the rebate continues to increase. And means that properties and other classes are paying more. And in a report from Wellington County, it's estimated that this loss of revenue is now costing each property owner about seven hundred and fifty-four dollars a year, which is a significant impact. And finally, it would also help eliminate the issue that we have with the farm tax ratio being set at the upper tiers. And there's often lobbying and the ratio continues to be reduced. And again, this is an additional burner, it's an additional burden, burden, sorry, for the other taxpayers.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Schattenberg?
Guess I just wanted to point out that Mapleton, if you didn't look on the map, is sort of in the Conestoga area, sort of northwest of Guelph. And they certainly have, and west of Orangeville in that area, they certainly have a lot of influences with residential growth in those areas, as we certainly do here as well. They very much affected by the Metro Toronto sort of overspill. Now, let's say that we are as well. But the property per acre sale price has really changed the assessment on farms in general. And it's, some of these are large corporations who are buying up these farms, obviously, and then renting out the lands, kind of goes without saying. We all know what's happened even in the edges of Woodstock, whether it's a boundary adjustment possibility area or not, boundary adjustment possibility area. Just the prices of rural property has gone up significantly, not just in the Mapleton area, like in the Guelph area, but certainly here as well.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Our next item on the agenda is from the Woodstock Lease Services regarding summer youth baseball program. Counselor Fraser?
That Woodstock City Council temporarily, pardon me, that Woodstock City Council fund the cost of the baseball field rental fee for twenty twenty for the Woodstock Police Summer Youth Baseball Program from the fee assistance in Recreation Fair Program.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Accioni. Discussion? Counselor Fraser?
Perhaps a Director of Parks could just comment on this and what actually it's going to take out of the fair program.
Thank you.
Your worship through to the councillor's question. Looking at the fair program over the last several years, we would be able to manage the fees in here and still continue with the program as has been in the past. So there is enough fees to cover this.
Thank you. Counselor Schattenberg?
Guess I just wanted to state, maybe ask up Ryan a question as well. This affected Parks Department is, was at all assuming that the ball season does get going reasonably soon, June, July, or August, because of the fact that they are using the ball diamonds at ten AM till noon, which is great for sort of supplying demand because they're not using a high demand time for, for ball diamond usage. But just for the Parks Department to go out and cut the grass and line the diamonds and do city staff work along those lines.
Your worship through to the councillor's question. We'll make sure that we can fit this in. Our maintenance operations can work around people's ability to play.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries. Now, I think we did skip over one. We will go to the correspondence from the town of Tilsenberg regarding the carbon tax credit. Can I have a lever on that? Counselor Lauder?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports resolution received from the town of Tilsenberg from its April fourth, twenty twenty council meeting requesting Prime Minister Justin Trudeau to roll back the ten dollar per ton or fifty percent increase in the carbon tax, which came into effect in April first, twenty twenty. And further, that the resolution be forwarded to the town of Tilsenberg and the Oxford MP. Dave McKenzie?
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Accioni. Discussion? Or Counselor Lauder?
This tax increase applies to financial pressure on businesses, citizens, and industry already being crippled by the hardship of COVID nineteen virus. And that's why I brought this forward from Tilsenberg.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And then our last one is regarding the Woodstock Theater and the temporary forgiveness for utilities. Counselor Tate?
I'll move that the Woodstock City Council temporarily waive the contribution to the cost of utilities from theater Woodstock until the Market Centre theaters are once again available for use.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Talbot. Discussion? Counselor Accioni?
Yes, I was going to move for the third motion. I'm just curious who all would be affected by this. Again, setting kind of a precedent this way. I'm in favor of waiving it. I will agree to the motion, but kind of curious if maybe Patrice may know offhand, otherwise still request a report for others that will be affected by this.
Thank you.
There are a number of organizations. Some of them are, currently don't have access to our building, so we're not charging them rent at this point in time. There's others that will look at it coming up, such as Southgate, if they're not operating the concession in the park, they won't be charged either. Mr. Connors probably has a better idea of some of the facilities and the clubs that are using the complex.
Okay, thank you. So does that mean we have a report coming either way then? Sorry.
I would expect that if staffs requested, we can certainly provide you a report.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Tate?
Yeah, just since I made the motion, I had a discussion with the CAO on this. And because the amount was so small, I didn't want to put it off with doing a staff report because he said there wasn't actually that many that have the joint relationship. So I don't think it's necessary that we have a report. I think it's a waste of staff time. And I think if some come forward, they can. But at this point, if we did a staff report to wait for this, it would be another month. So that's why I'm making the motion that I did.
Thank you. Further discussion? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And next up is staff and agent presentations. But with councils discretion, I'll use this time for a proclamation that I could have started our meeting off with. So whereas the Victorian Order of Nurses for Canada is a charitable, not-for-profit, community-based healthcare organization addressing community health and social needs. And whereas VON Oxford Nurses, home support workers, community service coordinators, and many other staff and volunteers have been caring for the lives and well-being of residents of the City of Woodstock, Ontario since nineteen fourteen. And VON's nursing, health promotion, and support services make a contribution to the healthcare system in Woodstock, Ontario, particularly during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Trevor Birch, Mayor, City of Woodstock, do hereby proclaim May seventeenth to May twenty-third, twenty twenty as VON Week in the City of Woodstock. And I would encourage all of the residents of the City of Woodstock to support VON and our community by sharing, encouraging virtual messages, and financially supporting VON Oxford's charitable programs dated the seventh day of May, twenty twenty at Woodstock, Ontario. And you will see the flag flying proudly at our museum square the week of May seventeenth to twenty-third, to the twenty-third. And of course, anyone who has opportunity right now to drive by the Sakura House that VON operates as our residential hospice, you'll see all of the wonderful cherry blossoms, the Sakuras, that are planted to symbolize that special relationship that we have here in the community and that building of the relationship between our Japanese partners and VON. And we'll get rid of my face for a second, and you can see the proclamation that'll be sent to VON. Little bit of a glare. Sorry for the viewers for that, but we'll make sure this gets off to them and that it's properly sanitized on its way. Next item on the agenda is our report from Administrative Services regarding the waiving of penalty and interest on outstanding property taxes and accounts receivable. Counselor Talbot? Sorry, Counselor, you're on mute there.
Sorry, I clicked it. I'll move that Woodstock City Council approves waiving penalty and interest normally charged on outstanding taxes on June first and July first, twenty twenty, and on accounts receivable from April to July, twenty twenty, and that the necessary bylaws be read.
Thank you. And the seconder? Counselor Lauder? Discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries. Our next item on the agenda is the dotting of the i's and crossing of the t's for the twenty twenty approved capital budget for the bylaw. Counselor Accioni?
Yes, move on myself. The Woodstock City Council refer the report regarding twenty twenty capital budget bylaw approval to the bylaw section of the agenda.
Thank you, and seconded by, we'll go with Counselor Fraser. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Carries. And our next item is the Engineering Department. And we have the two thousand and nineteen building fees report. Counselor Schattenberg?
I move that the Woodstock City Council receive the twenty nineteen building permits fee report as information.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Fraser. Discussion? Seeing none? You've heard, oh, Counselor Schattenberg? Or was that for a vote? Go ahead.
No, it wasn't for a vote. Maybe more point of discussion, just quickly and briefly on that. Because if you look at the report, the number I had was a hundred ninety-three percent above what they proposed or projected possible building reports were for. So it was a terrific year in twenty nineteen versus twenty eighteen even. And twenty eighteen, I'm sure it was a good year as well. So new construction, not only site servicing, mechanical updates, footings, foundations, steel structures, so much going on in the City of Woodstock on the commercial side, industrial side, institutional, and of course residential as well. So it's very much good news for the city of Woodstock. But I guess my, my question, I don't know if Harold DeHaan could answer or not. You would think with based solely on those numbers that it's something that you'd almost think we were understaffed, maybe in the Engineering Department, as far as being able to cover all the other projects that have to be sort of assessed and inspected along the way. How are things going in your area based on the fact that building permits are supposed to be sort of on a cost recovery basis?
Your worship through the councillor. Yes, staff has been very busy. And actually, we had, that was one of the additions to base budget for, for the twenty twenty revenue budget was, was an additional staff member in the Building Department. As you know, you know, we decided to all go with a base budget, so it has not happened yet. But yeah, the councillor's correct. It was a record year. Staff was quite busy. However, they've been doing a bang up job and have been able to keep up with the work. But if things continue to go, we'll definitely be, want to revisit that issue of an additional staff member.
Thank you. Counselor Schattenberg?
For anybody that wanted to look on the City of Woodstock website, you could see sort of a month by month the list of some of the building permit reports. But I guess another question to Harold DeHaan as well through the, through the mayor's chair would be the fact that only up until the end of August of the reports appearing online is that to do still with the cyber attack and just getting the, getting the reports compiled and getting them online?
Your worship through the councillor, that is correct. The cyber incident has affected the monthly reports. That and when we got back after recovering from the cyber incident, we actually switched software to a different software package. So we, we, council will be seeing a report in the next few weeks totaling up and breaking down more of what happened in twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries unanimous. Next on the agenda is the capital funding for protection barriers. Counselor Lauder, seconded by Counselor Accioni. You're on mute still, Counselor Lauder. There we go.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approves the funding of fifty thousand dollars for the supply and installation of protective barriers for customer service counters throughout city facilities from the capital project reserves. And further, that notice is hereby given that twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four capital budget is amended accordingly.
Thank you. And it was moved by Counselor Lauder, seconded by Counselor Accioni. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? And carries unanimous. And the next one on the agenda is a little bit of construction work that'll do a complete rebuild for the neighborhood around Earl's Court. Counselor Talbot?
I'll move Woodstock City Council award the tender for the reconstruction of Earl's Court Crescent to Bucon Construction Limited in the amount of nine hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents inclusive of HST.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Fraser. Discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And our next one on the agenda, we are now on to parks and recreation. So the naming rights agreement for the community complex. Counselor Fraser?
At Woodstock City Councils, to direct, direct staff to enter into a naming rights agreement with Dr. Leonard Reeves Foundation in order to name the community complex, the Reeves Community Complex.
Thank you. And the seconder? Counselor Tate? And discussion? Seeing none? You've heard them. Oh, Counselor Tate?
I just think we should appreciate that Dr. Reeves has come forward to do this donation. This facility's been up for a long time, and we haven't had anybody come forward. So any little bit is greatly appreciated.
Very good input. And of course, the city maintains many assets in many categories. And we have a sponsorship policy, and we're more than happy to talk to anyone at any point in time. And of course, that even relates to the recent opening at the pedestrian crosswalk at the dam. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do the ribbon cutting and recognize the individual's contribution that made that possible. But you can call us anytime, and whether it's for a park bench or a tree planted, or if you'd like to buy a new Zamboni or sponsor that new twin pad arena, we would love to talk. Further discussion? Counselor Fraser?
Thank you, worship, and through to Mr. Connors, I suspect. So we're renaming the complex to the Reeves Community Complex. All our citizens are quite used to discussing about going to the complex. I suppose of interest, this will spark, because when, when will the signage change? Do we have timelines for signage and those sort of things happening? Is this going to be delayed because of our current situation with the pandemic? Or is this something that'll move ahead fairly quickly?
Your worship through to the councillor's question. We've received the quotations to do the work. We will, once council approves it, or if council approves it, we will go forward with having the signs put up. But right now, we, we don't have timelines for it. Hopefully, it would be quite soon. But given how much work is pent up probably from this COVID, we don't have the exact timelines yet. But we would be pushing that it would happen as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And our next item on the agenda is the teleconferencing for advisory committees of council. Counselor Schattenberg?
That Woodstock City Council refer the report regarding teleconferencing for advisory committees of council to the bylaw section of the agenda.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Accioni. Discussion? Seeing none? You've heard, oh, Counselor Schattenberg?
Just going to say once again, obviously, if you haven't sort of read the reports online, if I'm just stating this for, I guess, for the viewers, to sort of say that some of the committees have had the opportunity to possibly already meet via teleconferencing like we are doing for our agenda. But three of the four committees I'm actually on need to have this changed, including the Recreation Advisory Committee, the Accessibility Committee, and also the Environment Committee for us to be able to continue our good work with volunteers and our committees throughout the City of Woodstock, that also involves city staff members as well. Be able to go forward and continue our work. The other one would be the Youth Advisory Committee is the fourth one to be able to continue to meet via this system, whether it be Zoom or another format.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And our next item on the agenda, we're on to Fire Department and sole source approval for the shared radio system infrastructure replacement. Counselor Fraser?
Thank you, your worship. That Woodstock City Council approved the sole sourcing of the municipal radio system infrastructure replacement installation as described in the report submitted by Bearcom.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Talbot. Discussion? Seeing none? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And continuing right along, we also have the automatic aid agreement for Southwest Oxford. Moved by Counselor Lauder, seconded by Counselor Accioni. And we need to just unmute Counselor Lauder. Thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorized the mayor and clerk sign the Fire Protection Tanker Operations Service Agreement with the Township of Southwest Oxford.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Lauder, seconded by Counselor Accioni. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Carries unanimous. We have one more on the fire side. The repeal and replacement of Municipal Code Chapter three oh nine. Counselor Tate, and seconded by Counselor Accioni.
I'll just refer to bylaws.
And thank you. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Carries unanimous. And now we have our, from our special committees and advisory task force, we have the community grants intake for twenty twenty, the first intake. I'll, I'll do a little bit of a preamble just before we make the motion. So the revenues from this is what comes forward from our agreement with the Ontario Lottery and Gaming Corporation and our partners at Gateway Casino. The funds are the result of what is collected in the previous year. So for twenty twenty, we are working off of the funds received in twenty nineteen. Now, many of the applications that were submitted are for activities that due to our current situation with COVID are not going to be operational. So the committee worked really hard to do what they can at this point in time. And I'm sure as we go through the year, we may see something different take place with the second intake. And failing that, any of these funds, we will make sure that we carry them forward because we know that the funds coming in in twenty twenty-one will be reduced significantly based on the current environment and the slots not operating. But Counselor Lauder sits on that committee, and I know they, they've worked very hard. And it includes a few new partners in the community that are doing some great work right now. And Counselor Lauder? And we'll do the unmute again, sorry. You have to click that button twice, maybe.
Yeah.
Yep. I might have to click it again. There we are.
Okay. I'll move that Woodstock, that in accordance with the Community Grants Policy GA zero zero three, council allocates the following grants for the first intake of the year twenty twenty under the Consider Now category. Operation Sharing of Woodstock, two thousand Operation Sharing of Woodstock, $2,050. Trumpet of Truth, the Refuge, $4,000. Cycles of Life for Support of Transitional Living, $2,500. Oxford Branch, Ontario Ancestor, Ontario Genological Society, $2,000. Victoria Quilts, $2,500. Big Brothers, Big Sisters, $4,500. K2K Productions, $2,500.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Accioni, discussion. We'll start with Counselor Lauder, then Counselor Accioni. Go ahead, Counselor Lauder.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the committee that we've worked hard on this, and our deputy clerk also, our acting deputy clerk. We, it's a big job just wanting to help everyone, and lots have big requests, and we just don't have the money to it, so to do that, but this is what we feel right now, and we can always look at a second intake if if there's needs out there. And we will be looking at the other applications if things open up, so this is all for right now, and hopefully it serves our community.
Thank you. Counselor Accioni.
Thank you, your worship, just really wanted to say thank you to Counselor Lauder and the entire team that's put this together, I know just how incredibly tough this could be right now, so many people in need. And commend you all for doing what needs to, and those that are still in need to, again, keep your application coming, and hopefully there will be more money in the future. And just a quick correctional note while you're mentioning, Operation Sharing is going to get $2,500 instead of $2,050, but thanks, great job, everybody.
Thank you, and so you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And our next item on the agenda is the Woodstock Recreation Advisory Committee and the Sports Wall of Fame, Counselor Schattenberg.
That Woodstock City Council approve and endorse this year's inductees for the Woodstock Sports Wall of Fame as recommended by the members of the Woodstock Recreation Advisory Committee.
Thank you, and the seconder, Counselor Accioni, discussion. Counselor Schattenberg.
Yeah, without mentioning the the date that it was sort of scheduled for for this springtime, because obviously it's been postponed, maybe in the fall, maybe unfortunately until early 2021, that the Sports Wall of Fame Committee within the Woodstock Recreation Advisory Committee has gone through a large number of of applicants, both previously received, they stay on file for four or five years, and those that are brand new that have been submitted to us as well, in fact, you can submit a nomination at any point in time whatsoever, the committee, but there is there's an annual deadline, of course, and we'll have to figure out, obviously, through this COVID-19, when the next ceremony could be held, let's cross our fingers, that maybe we can do something like this in November. I do know one of the inductees, because the full list and the biographies do appear in the council agenda today, that one of them actually is in Bradenton, Florida now, and that's the figure skating coach, Keri Leach. So we have to give people some leeway time too, to be able to sort of travel up or travel to Woodstock too for the for the ceremony, if they happen to live elsewhere.
Thank you, further discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have bylaws, Counselor Accioni.
But a few of them here, so bear with me, of course, thank you, your worship, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Lauder. The following bylaws be given a first and second reading. Number 9362-20, a bylaw to repeal and replace the City of Woodstock Municipal Code Chapter 309 Emergency Plan Peacetime. Number 9363-20, a bylaw to temporarily amend bylaw 9344-19, a bylaw to provide for an interim tax levy. Number 9364-20, a bylaw to temporarily amend bylaw number 9339-19. A bylaw to amend City of Woodstock Municipal Code by repealing and replacing there to Municipal Code Chapter 330 Entitled Fees and Charges. Number 9365-20, a bylaw to amend the City of Woodstock Municipal Code Chapter 30 Accessibility Advisory Committee. Number 9366-20, a bylaw to amend the City of Woodstock Municipal Code Chapter 51 Environment Advisory Committee. Number 9367-20, a bylaw to amend the City of Woodstock Municipal Code Chapter 67 Recreation Advisory Committee. Number 9368-20, a bylaw to amend the City of Woodstock Municipal Code Chapter 75 Youth Woodstock Youth Advisory Committee. And finally, number 9369-20, a bylaw to adopt the 2020 capital budget for the City of Woodstock.
Thank you, and you've heard the motion, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carries unanimous, Counselor Accioni.
Thank you, your worship, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Lauder, that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading. 9362-20, inclusive to 9369-20.
Thank you, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? Carries unanimous. And for questions and addresses, I'm going to go in the order that things appear on my screen, which will definitely be different than our counselors and staff and the viewers that are watching this at home, but I will start with Counselor Tate.
No real comments, nothing's changed since our last meeting, just look forward to when we can start seeing people again, and hopefully all the businesses are okay in the city of Woodstock and around, and that's about it.
Thank you, Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, your worship, pretty much the same message, looking forward to being able to see people again, a little bit more of a social setting. Just wanted to comment on the piece of literature that came through the post from the city of Woodstock regarding the COVID-19, I hope that people take the opportunity to read it and go with the suggestions, because we definitely want everyone to stay safe and stay well, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schattenberg.
Yeah, I guess I have two or three things to mention, the Pituck Dam Trail that you used to earlier, Mr. Mayor, that is now open across the pituck conservation area, certainly a great addition to the city of Woodstock, I like to thank Brian Connors, Chris Kearney, the entire Parks Department for for their efforts on their side of things, of course, the city of Woodstock itself, because we had to approve it through the budget for 2019 to be able to get some of the work done that was, including the guardrails that were put up as well in the dam crossing. Also want to thank, of course, Ian Wilcox, the entire Upper Thames River Conservation Authority staff for for their side of things and discussing things with Brian Connors and elsewhere for the city of Woodstock to be able to pull this off, and I've walked across three times already, I'm not going to keep count how many times I'm going to go across, but so far, it's three times across, and it's really a great addition, and maybe to some degree, take off a little bit less traffic through some of the other trails that are terrific throughout the city of Woodstock. I've been down to the Roth Park Trail so many times between Lansdowne and Roth Park, that it's almost like the 401 down there sometimes, people just wanted to get some some fresh air, very, very busy, just reminded everybody, there's also a brand new trail out on Patula Road. That would be east of of the industrial section there, and it's a brand new trail too, so there's certainly lots of places to go explore and get some fresh air and great outdoors. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, if you're ever on Facebook, take a look at the site, you know you grew up in Woodstock when, there's been a lot of great discussions, and maybe some people have spent more time on social media with this with this COVID-19 stuff going on, because there's great discussions there currently on standard tube. Pictures, actually, I saw a picture of Clark Street, and there was only one house on Clark Street in the city of Woodstock, and Chris, we all know the Clarks are almost in the center of Woodstock down, and a busy sort of thoroughfare where the Huron Park School football field, so much on there, but so many vintage old photos of the downtown and so much more that that's one good place to maybe spend a little bit of time, if you are indoors in social media and Facebook and the page, you know you grew up in Woodstock when, so that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, Counselor Talbot, Counselor Tate, and Counselor Lauder, Happy Mother's Day. And and to all our citizens out there who are watching this, I hope you have a great Mother's Day, all the ladies. The weather doesn't look very promising, but celebrate the fact that you are a mother and you have children, and you love them, and look after them. Thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor Accioni.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I wanted to start off with saying a Happy Mother's Day as well to not only my own mom, but so many others out there, so Happy Mother's Day. And I'm not going to beat it to death, just wash your hands and keep a hockey stick away from each other while you're out and about, and if you are going to some businesses that are opening up now, I just remember to keep space, respect the time and the rules that are in place, and just be safe with everybody, okay, thank you.
Thank you, and don't know about the hockey stick that works for a whole bunch of people in the city, but of course, also we've worked it out officially for the city that it equates to one cow or two calves as well. Counselor Lauder. There we go.
There. Just thank you, and check out the Woodstock Art Gallery website, they are having different ways to keep you involved. The latest being Art in Bloom Online Auction, and they have a lot of lovely works on there, so check them out, and they set a few funds for the additional for the art gallery, and I too have been enjoying doing the Causeway Walk, and on Sunday, there were so many people out there, and it was amazing to hear people say they didn't even know we had this gem in the city, so it's really really brought people out, and it was great to see the families. And just want to give a big thanks to the Parks Department for getting that opened on May the first. And that's all I have to say, just keep safe and keep healthy.
Well, thank you, and definitely, we are very blessed here in the friendly city, and with all of the efforts from both council and staff and the partnerships we have to be able to have such great experiences with these trails, and there's more work yet to be done. But one of the things that also is a great opportunity, making those special memories for your children and grandchildren, some of the activities that you're doing right now are museum curator is looking for your input, and make sure you send all of that along, so that we can document how we were resilient and thrive during this time, and can document it for the next hundred years for generations to come. Now, I prepared a few little notes, and I guess I'll start by saying that these words truly can't express what I feel. And what I feel right now is a great sense of pride for this city, for this council, for all of our staff, and for all of the members here in the community. And it's all the little things that make a huge difference. Little things like putting those thank you messages and smiley faces in the window, so when your grandparents go out for a walk in the fresh air around the block, they see that encouragement. For all of the families that are out there gathering and painting rocks and hiding them in plain sight at our mailboxes or businesses, or some of those more complex places on the trails and parks and the trees. Thank you for bringing smiles and giving us challenges along the way. There are so many people who are reaching out to their neighbors and friends and pitching in right now, wherever they can, and where it's safe to do. And I'm just so encouraged, the number of people who continue to follow the rules. And they're doing so in such a way that we can continue to make sure that we allow as much freedom of movement here in the friendly city. Other other communities are not able to offer quite as much freedom with their interpretation of the orders, because we know how a bad apple can spoil the bunch, but here in the friendly city, I'm just I'm just amazed how great people are. Now, I've been talking to a lot of people lately remotely, whether it's on social media or email or conference calls, and hearing about some of the events we cancel. We can't say postponed, it's hard to postpone Victoria Day celebrations, they're canceled. But people are talking about the memories that they had in the past, and they are so looking forward to Victoria Day in 2021. So I just want to remind everyone that the sacrifices that we're making right now on our community events that have always made people feel so welcome in the friendly city. Those sacrifices are going to ensure that for years to come, we can all safely gather and make new memories for those children and grandchildren, some of whom haven't been born yet. Now, I'm not going to do a list of all the people that need to be thanked, because I know that there's no way to thank them all. But from those first responders, those gas station attendants, our public works employees, the bus drivers, everyone that keeps our city running right now, a heartfelt thank you, keep up the good work. And the council, thank you, and all of the staff that were present today, thank you. And remember, we are all in this together. A motion to adjourn. Counselor Accioni, seconded by Counselor Fraser. All those in favor? We are adjourned. We'll see you next time.